Hi, my name is Lisa Gray. I work for the Houston Chronicle. And I'd like to welcome you all tonight to talk about transportation and what Houston needs to make it better. We're sponsored tonight by the League of Women Voters and Mobility Houston. And we'd like to thank the Houston Technology Center for letting us be here. Our panelists tonight, I'm going to make them introduce themselves in greater depth, but I'll start. We have Joseph Kopser, who founded Rideshare as CEO. We have Councilmember Carla Cisneros, new to Houston City Council. We have Sarah Schimmer from AAA Texas. And James Lamas from Traffic Engineers. So Joseph, would you introduce yourself in a couple of minutes and explain why you're here and why you care about transportation?
Well, thank you for the introduction and thanks everyone for coming. This is a Friday night in Houston, and this is actually a packed house. And the only chairs that are empty are the ones in the front row. So first of all, I want to thank you all for being here. So the very story of Ride Scout is super simple. I, like you all, was just trying to get to and from work every day when I was living in Washington DC. I was only five miles from the office. I could take a bus, I could take the light rail, I could take the metro, I could drive my car, I could ride with a friend, I could even bike in if the weather was nice, not like this week in DC. But what I noticed though is that every way I went in had a cost, either directly or indirectly. In the time I spent waiting on 66 or the GW Parkway, or the transfers I had to make on the bus, or waiting on my friend, or maybe he was late, or maybe I drove and then it was a 15-minute walk from my parking spot. Now, I just wanted to find one place that organized my daily commute well enough that I could see the time and the costs and the overall impact on my life. Because I wanted to have breakfast with my girls, or I had to meet my wife after work for whatever event. It didn't exist, so nights and weekends, I managed to work with some friends over the years and invented what is now Ride Scout, which is a single place on your phone that you can go to, put in A to B, like Google Maps, but it's really Google Maps on crack. And about a year and a half ago, we were lucky enough to be acquired by an automobile maker, ironically, in this case, it was Mercedes, who is not only the inventor of Cardigo, but they're also in this emerging space of mobility and technology where it comes together. So why I'm so interested in this is I started Ride Scout in the earliest days, almost four years ago, just trying to solve my own problem. But what I'm super excited about now though, is that I realize that it not only can help other people, but most importantly, when cities reconnect and they make the daily commute easier, and they make you more able to connect with the faces and places that you're trying to go to, when you lower that barrier, you not only reconnect the city, but you give upward mobility for all, rather than just ground mobility. And so it's gone from just helping me get to work, and now it's really a mission to really change cities in a way that's positive. So I'm just thrilled to be here and thank you for hosting.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Cisneros?
So hello, everyone. Yes, I'm Carla Cisneros. I'm a newly-elected city council member. I represent District H. So I'm a district council member. The area I represent is sort of straight up the north of Houston, and then it kicks out to the east, all the way to 610, along Buffalo Bayou. So some of the transportation issues and mobility issues that I'm really very passionate about are just making sure we're looking to the future, but just making sure that we're really paying attention to where it is we want to be, that we're not operating under old thinking or old models, because Houston is changing and it's changing fast. You know, in the next 20 years, we're going to have an additional 5 million more people living in Houston, 1 million inside the loop, 4 million in the suburban ring around Houston. So when you think about those big numbers and how that's going to change how we travel in the city, how we move, how we live, it's really profound. The mayor this week told us at a meeting that during the workday, that the population of Houston actually increases by 20% because of the people that come in here. So when we say another million people are going to be living here, it's really, you know, another 20% of them will be, you know, on top of that also. The numbers are going to be huge. So we can't think the way we have been. The answer no longer is just adding more lanes to highways. We need to really rethink how we operate. So that involves a lot of different kinds of transportation and thinking, and then how we guide the growth of our city, so that we're really paying attention to the integration of our transportation and the development that we have along those transportation corridors. Not just the rail that I'm thinking, but also, you know, how we integrate with the transportation nodes on our metro systems, and then future things that we don't even have yet, like commuter rail. In 40 years, we will need commuter rail. So, I mean, to the extent that we can even be thinking that way now and setting things in place, that will better prepare us for the future.
The future. I told you.
Every time you say the future, that was the sound of the commuter rail actually coming.
Okay. Maybe that means it's your turn.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the invitation to join in. I'm Sarah Schimmer with AAA Texas, AAA New Mexico Public Affairs. And I'm here to bring a voice of traffic safety advocacy to the conversation. Not only do we need multimodal options, which my two other panelists have mentioned, we need to learn how to share the available space we have. We need to learn how to share the road together. And just to put some of that into perspective...
Here comes the future.
Sure, just to put a little bit of that into perspective, as our population ages, by 2040, most of the drivers on the road will be 65 years or older. So not only do we need to plan for various options to accommodate everyone's needs, we need to plan for options that accommodate an aging population. So that should be part of the conversation as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Lamas. I work for a transportation planning and engineering firm here in town called Traffic Engineers, Inc. We've had the opportunity to work on, we've had the opportunity to work on Metro's Transit System Reimagining Project, the redesign of the local bus system, the City of Houston's Complete Streets efforts. Right now, we're working on the City of Houston Bike Plan, as well as a variety of other developments, tollway projects, school area traffic.
Do you have two mic systems going? Is it just a constant doodle?
I'm getting some weird power coming out of the optics and it's beating back from my microphone.
Oh, we are in the Houston Technology Center.
Upstairs, they're actually inventing a nuclear engineering transportation solution. And that's what's happening.
Are we good? So at work, we're involved in a variety of transportation efforts in Houston. Outside of work, I also serve on the Board of Houston Bike Share, which is the nonprofit that operates the B Cycle system, our growing Bike Share program here in Houston. And I moved to Houston in 2008 and have not owned a car since then. And so I walk and bike and ride the bus to get around for my daily transportation needs.
Can you just explain how you do that?
Sure. I mean, for instance, today, I woke up, a friend of mine was interested in trying out how to ride the bus to work. So I took the, I rode a bus over to the Rice Village area, met up with him, and we rode back downtown. From his office, I took B Cycle over to my office. Later on in the day, we had a meeting at the City of Houston, so I took a B Cycle over there. Afterwards, I B-cycled home. Other days, I might go to the grocery store. I could walk to a grocery store. I chose to live in a location where I can do that, where most of my daily needs are within walking distance. But I like the one over a little bit farther away better, so I often take the bus there. Usually, I can carry all my groceries in two grocery bags and come back on the bus as well. Last week, I went and it was raining when I came out, so I took a $6 Uber. I probably spend 20, maybe $30 a month on Uber. You know, basically nothing on Bike Share, since an annual membership's $65. It's a great deal. My company is kind enough to cover my transit fares, and so, you know, there's basically nothing compelling me to spend thousands of dollars a year on a car when I can meet my needs and have money left over.
That raises one of the interesting questions. Owning a car is remarkably expensive, and it really affects Houston's quality of life for everyone on the income spectrum, but especially for people at the lower end. And Councilwoman Cisneros, I was hoping you could talk a little bit about what you've seen as far as transportation inequity in Houston, and ways we could improve it.
Well, there's a lot of inequity in Houston. You know, we're recognized nationally as the most diverse city in the country, and I've always been very proud of that. We are also recognized as the most, the highest amount of, of, well, our neighborhoods, they're not integrated, we have the most...
Segregated.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. The most segregated. We are recognized as the most segregated by income city in the country. And so we have an opportunity to fix that with all the people that are coming, you know, and just in managing it well, so that we've got transportation that meets the needs of everybody. Transportation is expensive. It's not just the cost of the car, or the cost of actually operating the car and driving. Transportation costs add to the, are part of the equation for the cost of living. So if we can reduce the commute, you know, that people can live closer to home, you know, that we don't have people coming from the suburbs, that everyone feels like they have to live out there to come, you know, to be in Houston. And that model will be possible as we become increasingly more urban, more dense, and then we'll see, you know, the economies of scale that will make it all more affordable. Right now, we are just in a very awkward period, you know, a growth period of not really being the suburban model we've been in the past, not really being urban either, but we're transitioning. And it's really important that, you know, from a policy point of view, from a government point of view, that we are working, you know, to be nimble enough to be adjusting and, you know, to the design guidelines that make sense, and that, you know, that really set the stage, that we're not, you know, we're not just stuck on, you know, parking ordinances or design, building setbacks or sidewalks, things that, you know, that don't fit and don't support, you know, a more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly city.
And I'd like to add to that, you know, AAA, we do a lot of studies and gather a lot of data on the cost of owning and operating a vehicle. There's licensing, registration, there's basic maintenance, and we've got to understand that families in the greater Houston area sometimes own one, two, three cars. We are a driving culture. We do still have that suburban model in place, so it's a significant cost to the average family household to own and operate a vehicle, to gas up that vehicle, to maintain that vehicle. And this is something that we communicate to our teen drivers when we're teaching new teen drivers about driving safety and driving responsibilities. You want to always maintain your vehicle so that you don't break down on the roadways and disrupt the traffic that really needs to stay in motion throughout the day.
And yet, Houstonians really love their cars.
They do. They love their cars, and it's so important to, in our planning, as James was mentioning, to offer those multimodal options, because as the council member was saying, some people don't have the option of owning a vehicle, of owning a car.
Well, you know, we said Houstonians seem to love whatever good options they have. You know, people...
Okay, now, let me push back a little. The Kinder Houston Area Survey asked people, you know, "How do you get to work?" And roughly 80% are driving alone in a vehicle. They asked, "If you have a good transit option, would you take it?" And 70% said, "No, I like driving in my car." So here's my question for all of you, starting with you, Joseph. How do you lure people out of their cars?
Well, there's two ways to do it. First is through experience, and the second is through, I don't want to call it education, like they don't know better. But I loved James' example this earlier. What he said was, he went over to Rice to help a friend try the bus and understand how it worked. If you don't know how easy it is to use B Cycle, if you don't know how easy it is to use the park and rides, if you don't know how easy it is to find a partner to carpool in HOB, if you don't know, well, of course, you're going to say, "I'd still prefer my car," because we don't know. And that's why we're so excited about Mobility Houston, which is really what brings us all here together tonight, this crowdsourced platform, because people are going to generate ideas for how their area can provide areas and ways to make transit. And when I say transit, I just don't mean public transit, I mean the ways we get to work, to school, to entertainment, easier. So I bet when we do this survey in a year from now, after Mobility, well, however, the next survey, after Mobility Houston has had an impact, you're going to see a reduction in the people who say, "Yeah, but I'd still prefer my car." And we'll get into this later, so I'll be quiet, but the fully burdened cost, not just the expense, the direct cash of driving your own car, but let's talk about freedom and having the freedom to have your own car. Folks, when you're stuck in the first, or second, or third, or fourth, or fifth, or sixth lane of the Katy Freeway, there's no freedom in that. You are stuck.
You know, another thing that came out of the Kinder Survey was that when they asked people, you know, "What kind of housing do you want to live in? You know, do you want the suburban model? Do you want an urban model?" For the first time, I think it was pretty evenly split. And we have lots of options already for everyone who wants to have a suburban model. But maybe only 10% of our population has that urban model. And so that's what I think we need to pay attention to. And I think as people are comfortable and have those options, we will see people, you know, choosing public transportation. I think probably 30% is a good place to be right now, but I think that as we change and build the infrastructure, you know, to make it more possible to live that way, you know, that we'll see more people choosing public transportation.
Yeah. Sarah? Do you think it will just happen? Will we just begin to, like, leave our cars at home because it becomes more scary?
You know, what the other panelists have said, as options become available and they learn more about how available and affordable and easy they are to use, then maybe they'll use more than one type of transportation during their day. Maybe drive into the city, and then once they're in the city, use a bicycle, a taxi, a bus, something to get around while they're in the city and maybe leave their car parked. So I think people like options. Houston workers, they love options, and, you know, as they become more available and more information is available, people will learn more about them.
Okay, you know a lot about safety, and one of my hesitations about biking to work is that I think I would be creamed. How does Houston make biking, walking, doing things like that feel safer? Because I've got to get to a bus stop if I'm going to take transit. I've got to...
Sure. I think conversations like this, where people have an opportunity to contribute to a policy discussion, there are opportunities at the city level, at the county level. Houston Galveston Area Council often reviews plans in place, and I know James mentioned you're working on something currently as well, about multimodal transportation.
Yeah, I would say it shouldn't be very puzzling why the majority of people drive for most of their trips right now. Our, you know, our transportation policy, our city development policy, just about everything for the last 60-plus years has been singularly geared towards making driving as easy and cheap as possible. I mean, our foreign policy, for heaven's sake. And so, I mean, you know, the city regulations require every car to have a, you know, safe place to stay off the street at night. We don't have that policy for our citizens even. And we've proven over and over that when Houstonians have other good options, they'll take them. Our original eight-mile red light rail line was the most heavily used in the country among light rail lines outside of Boston, and Boston had a 100-year head start. Metro's park and ride bus system, if it were on rails instead of tires, would be the second busiest commuter railroad in the country built since 1900, outside of LA MetroLink and there three times the size. Over half of downtown employees who live in the areas served by the park and ride system ride the park and ride bus. And so the Texas Medical Center, the area around the Texas Medical Center has, you know, has the bayou trails connecting into it, and has a bike-to-work rate, or sorry, 10 times higher than the regional average. So, you know, we've been singularly focused on making driving as easy as possible, and we have the results to show for that. If we think that perhaps a different model will serve us better going forward, then, you know, putting a similar amount of effort will likely yield results.
Yeah. James, I wanted to ask you about things that employers could do to encourage employees not to drive alone to work.
So one of the first things that employers need to realize is that, just as we achieve... Oh, here comes the train. It sounded like more like a jet or a train. Could be either. Here's what employers can do. If they realize that, and I used this term earlier, the fully burdened cost of mobility, how much it impacts their bottom line when their employees are late due to traffic problems, walk in and are so frustrated, they spend 15 minutes at the water cooler complaining about traffic, then they have to cut out early, because if they don't leave now, rush hours is going to crush them, and they want to get home for their daughter's recital. If employers just realize, wait a minute, we contribute, we as employers contribute to all of this movement of people to and from work, we can be a part of the solution. And it's not just in terms of subsidizing the transportation like some forward-thinking companies do, and we'll pay for your bus, we'll pay for your B Cycle, we'll pay for your carpooling costs, but it's going beyond that and saying, wait a minute, we're going to incentivize it or disincentivize it. Imagine if employers, and my company does this, doesn't provide parking. Stop. All right, I don't want anybody too fired up. We don't provide parking at our offices. Some people choose to drive in, some people take the bus in, some people walk, some people bike, but whatever they do, if they come in any other mode other than driving, we pay for it. Now, I know that doesn't work for huge corporations out in the suburbs, but they can do a lot. There are companies like Bridge, there are companies like Scoop, there are companies like Karma. There are so many technology solutions that you can bring in as employers to incentivize how your people get to your large campuses, that whether you're a small company or a large company, you have a huge part to play, because you induce that demand. You are putting people on the road to get to your company, and there's so much potential from a business standpoint. The business's bottom line, if they participate with the cities, if they participate with Houston Metro, if they participate in these incentive programs, down go the costs and then up go the benefits.
Now, Joseph, you're in Austin, so you're not required to have a certain number of parking spaces per square foot of office space?
Well, the buildings, depending on when they were built and where they were built, do have parking minimums. Sometimes, it's really crazy that the parking minimum and the parking maximum is the same number. Go figure on that. But what we're realizing is that there's so many options, whether it be traditional bus, or carpooling, or new services like Uber and Lyft in the cities that are available, which is almost everywhere. You're realizing that you don't need that concrete out there, and what's really exciting is, especially old malls that are being repurposed, they're realizing, wait, we can take this parking that's not being used, and we can reuse that land, we can put new commercial opportunities, just like cities that put in bike lanes realize, if I take up parking and I put in bike lanes, my actual foot traffic and my business goes up. So anyway, you get me all fired up, I can talk all evening about it, but businesses have, not only for their employers, but also for their customers, have a real incentive to participate in all these discussions, rather than sitting perhaps on the sideline.
Councilmember Cisneros, Houston has basically, except for a few places like downtown, basically a one-size-fits-all standard for parking.
That's right. I mean, it's not really up to the businesses to decide if they're going to have parking or not here in Houston. There's regulations that govern that. And, you know, the parking costs businesses money, when they have to provide X number of parking spaces, and it means reducing the size of the restaurant, the store, I mean, that's costing them money to have to include more parking spaces. But it's density that makes it possible, you know, so, and that's, again, the suburban model, you know, when you're driving from far away to the middle of nowhere, and, you know, and you're in the suburbs, that's something you do. But if it's urban, then we need to change the rules. And there's been a reluctance to do that. I think that, you know, especially along our transit corridors, along the metro rail, that ought to be the most persuasive argument of why it's okay to reduce those kinds of those regulations. And then I think it'll happen. But density in this case is our friend. You know, the more dense it is, the more it's easy to justify, you know, getting rid of those big parking lots that, you know, that make buildings back so far from the street and just, you know, really create hostile, you know, environments for pedestrians. The other thing is that having these, you know, big parking lots, that doesn't, that does not generate much income for the city. You know, it's a real inefficient use of space. And so to the extent that we can reduce that, then the city can also be more profitable.
There's a political argument.
You know, this is an exciting time for Houston. It's an opportunity. There's so much development going on, lots of mixed-use residential, lots of opportunity for groups like this to engage in discussion, to help shape and form the policy around new cityscapes, sidewalk standards, you know, so this is a great time to become involved. And I'm so thrilled that there's an opportunity like this, and Mobility Houston, for people to engage and share their thoughts and ideas.
I wanted to ask you about some of the trade-offs involved with safety. One of the obvious ones is speed, which we love. I drive too fast on the freeway whenever I can. And how, if we are going to approach fewer, you know, Division Zero, zero deaths for pedestrians, zero deaths for bikers, how do we convince drivers to slow down? Is that a design problem? Is that a cultural problem? What can we do?
You know, there, when people are driving, you have to take into account the environment that you're in. This is something that we talk to teen drivers about. Are you driving in a neighborhood or residential area? Are you driving on a freeway situation? And, you know, the speed limits do vary per whatever kind of driving space that you're in. And it's definitely a safety, culture, identity that we have as a nation and of Texas. And just to share some statistics with you, 65% of survey drivers have admitted to, or have said that speeding in a residential area is unacceptable, yet 43% say that they've done it recently, within the last 30 days. And so I think people recognize the behavior, they have the education behind it, but then it's translating the education and the knowing, the need to change the behavior into actually changing the behavior. And so, Councilmember, I'm sure that you have residential areas calling your office wanting speed bumps or some kind of traffic mitigation device to slow down traffic. So I think the culture's there, people know what they need to do to be more safe in highway driving situations and residential driving situations, but it's making that translation from the education to actually changing the behavior.
James, are there subtler things that a traffic engineer can do to make me think, oh, this is a place to drive slowly?
Absolutely. And I think as a traffic engineering profession, we... The traffic engineering profession did a fantastic job engineering freeways, which are, you know, exceptionally safe for what they do and efficient ways of getting places quickly. But we got a little bit overzealous and started trying to apply some of those same principles to city streets, which is a fundamentally different environment where, you know, there's a lot more complexity, a lot more going on. And so engineering is a big piece of it. Here in Houston, our streets are about three times more dangerous than New York's, 40% more dangerous than LA's. About 200 Houstonians a year, people driving, people biking, people walking, are being killed on our streets. And this, I think hopefully this process is an opportunity to discuss whether this is acceptable to us, if that's a cost of doing business, or if we, you know, would rather keep our friends and neighbors around. And the, sorry, I forgot where I was going with that.
Well, you know, you've come at a great point. So mobilityhouston.com is where you need to go to present these ideas. There's a great example when it comes to just bike lanes. Do you ever think about the fact how strange it is, the way we design this, is it's curb, car, stationary car and parking, 4,000 pounds of steel sitting there stationary. Then we put the bike lane, single person, you know, about 20 pounds worth of, you know, metal and tubes and rubber, then the big giant speeding cars at 40 miles an hour. Why can't you get on mobilityhouston.com and say where you'd like to see the parallel parking moved out, brrr, about three feet from the curb? parking moved out, brrr, about three feet from the curb? And then now cyclists have the curb and then stationary parking where they can just zoom down, and then the car acts like the barrier. Simple things like that. I mean, I think it's simple. Traffic engineers will, may say it's hard, but those are creative ideas we'd love to see at mobilityhouston.com of where you'd like to see that, because in simple ways, with some paint, we can really change the urban landscape and how we get around.
Absolutely, and I remember where I was going was that...
Okay.
The, the way we design our streets in some ways is pretty absurd. I mean, we let you go, you know, 30, 35, 40, 45, in between traffic lights and then sit there for a minute. If you do the math, you know, moderating speeds often does not mean you get there any slower, since most of the delay is at intersections anyway. And so, just, you know, recalibrating some of our standards and thinking these things all the way through, there's an opportunity to, you know, make a safer city. And other cities are leading the way, Los Angeles, New York City, somebody already referenced their Vision Zero programs, which is their efforts to achieve zero traffic fatalities within a decade. And, you know, there are well-known engineering efforts, education measures, and methods of enforcement, that they're, you know, they're trending in that direction. Maybe they won't get to zero, but in the meantime, a number of lives will be saved, probably hundreds. So, other places are figuring it out for us, we, and, you know, but Houston has the opportunity to jump in there and innovate in that area as well.
Okay. We'd like to take questions from the audience, but right before we do that, I'd like to close with the panel by asking you to give me in one sentence, max, the biggest thing that Houston could do to improve transportation. So, start it, no, I'll, I'll go back to James, put you on the hot seat again.
Okay.
One sentence.
I think the biggest opportunity here is to talk about what our actual goal is. We've been very, we've accepted for years, every time that, you know, our politicians or our transportation officials come around and say, here, we need more money, we're going to relieve congestion. And we've been like, okay, that sounds good. And every time, we end up with more cars moving slower than ever. And we've done this over and over and over again. And so, we need to think about, you know, what is the real choice here? What are the trade-offs? Is our, you know, highest and biggest transportation need to move more cars slower than ever? Or are there other things that we could do with that, with those investments?
So, for me...
I think I'll let you know my paragraph.
Just a couple sentences. But, you know, for me, and from my perspective, and from AAA and traffic safety, just keeping top of mind, sharing the road with your fellow drivers, with the cyclists, with the pedestrians, with new teen drivers, with aging drivers, with parents with new children, there's just, there's so many layers to being a safe driver, just being aware of your surroundings, being aware of the people that you're sharing the road with.
Okay. Councilmember Sisneros?
I'm going to answer it from the perspective of me representing District H, because what I would like to do is to build stronger connections to traffic nodes into neighborhoods, so that they're more walkable. You know, there's like, there's 12 or 13 new rail stops on the red line, the green line, and they're nice, but you get off the, you know, the metro and then it's, then what? You know, they don't really connect to the neighborhoods. And so, you know, that connecting better, connecting transportation more comfortably, more safely, you know, more pleasantly to the neighborhoods, I think would be huge and encouraging the success of our public transportation.
Thanks.
What I think you can do, or we can do, is literally, and I'm not being cliche, go to mobilityhouston.com and tell us, you're the experts in your neighborhood, you're the expert in your commute, you're the expert at your office, you know, to be able to tell the civic leaders, to be able to tell the industry leaders, to be able to tell the traffic engineers. Tell them, this is such an amazing resource being launched here today in Houston, that's the best way to solve these problems, is from the ground up where the rubber literally meets the road, where it's a bike, or a car, or a bus, or I guess the steel meets the rail. You tell us, use this website, and this community through its innovation can solve a lot of these problems.
Oh, that is a great segue now. We'd like to take questions from the audience, so, surely. Oh, look at these hands.
Well, we have a microphone so the people on TV can hear you.
I would just like to follow up on what Councilwoman Sisneros said. I'm go-to Wheeler Station twice a day, every day, and there's not a crosswalk across Main from Wheeler Station. And when I was a driver, I used to wonder what was wrong with all those people at Wheeler Station and why they walked across in the middle of the road. And now I know, because sometimes I'm one of those people.
There comes the train, Wheeler.
Did anyone have, that was more a statement, I think.
I like it.
So...
One thing that I'm wondering is, what will we do about the culture of driving within Houston? I grew up in Minnesota, and I've lived in a number of cities throughout the US, and I've noticed that the culture of driving here is more aggressive than in other places. As we look to solve a number of transportation issues we're having...
You've made the train mad.
Yeah.
I've made the train mad. And as we look to increase safety, I see changing our driving culture, making people more empathetic on the road as a... I see both of those as a solution. My thoughts, or my question is, what do all of you think about the cultural problem of driving within Houston?
Can we turn that mic off? I think that might be part of it. Well, so, a quick answer to that, as the train passes, the way we designed our streets to be big, wide, and broad allows drivers this false sense of security that they can go fast, they can go, but the reason why a lot of modern cities have these wide roads and have these problems is because they're not ancient. Go to any city in the world that's ancient, where the roads were actually streets, and the streets were designed for walking people and horses, they're narrow. They don't have the same pedestrian accidents we do because the drivers were conscious that they're literally very close in proximity. But big, wide roads allow drivers to have a false sense of security, and I think that in so many southern cities that grew up in the last 60 years have these problems.
I think Joseph's absolutely right. I'd offer two other answers. One is, we have this culture because we accept it. A few years ago, you know, we voted to no longer have red light cameras, and now we're the most dangerous city in the country for red light running fatalities. And so, you know, until we talk about that and whether that, those really are our values in Houston, that you should be able to do what you want even if you run someone over, then we're going to have that issue. Second of all, I think it's going to be a transition, it's going to be a shift, but there's a lot of that going on already. For instance, with Houston B-cycle, a lot of people, like Lisa said earlier, think, what, are you crazy to bike in Houston? You'll get creamed. Well, somehow we almost touched 100,000 trips on B-cycle last year with just 29 stations and 200 bikes. And I think efforts like that, or opportunities like that, are getting a lot more people out to see the city from a different vantage point and see how, in that case, how bikes can be a useful part of the transportation system. And over time, that will change the way, the way we think about our streets and how we get around.
I also think that just as people get used to driving in places with pedestrians, they understand you can't always go 35 miles per hour. I speak as someone who's tempted to drive 35 miles per hour, I've learned.
So, this is playing off of the culture question a little bit. As advocates, I think that the most important thing we can do is talk to our close community, like people we love, our friends, about why this issue is so important to us. And I'm often faced with this, I love my car, I'm not going to give up my car, kind of answer. So how do we make this in conversation not seem like an ideal and something that's quaint and cute, and really start kind of putting the bug in our friend and family's ears, like, this change is coming and you better, like, start changing your mental process about it? I'm just wondering what you say to people that's short and sweet.
Culture is really hard to change. It's so ingrained in who we are and how we identify, you know, what we think, and, you know, and as Americans, I mean, the car is what, you know, is a big part of what defines us. But I think it may, it may, oh, and just, you know, a car, when cars first came and people saw them, you know, that they were just going to be a, you know, the horseless carriage, it was so much more than that. I mean, it changed the way we live, you know, all of a sudden it meant you could, you could work in another town. It meant, it meant freedom, it meant, you know, a lot of other opportunity. And I think that, you know, if we, if we're, if we're just saying now, now we're moving to something else, that we need to kind of think more broadly, that it's not just, it's not, it's not just the mechanics of moving people, but it's how, how does that change us? One of the things we may start to see is that maybe there'll be fewer cars, and maybe a family will have one car, instead of everyone has their own car. I mean, you know, and then you could still celebrate, you know, the car ownership and all the, you know, I mean, the auto show was just here, you know, and maybe some of you went to that, but, you know, and there's some, there's some beautiful classic cars. But, but maybe we start to change. I don't think it's going to be anything that happens quickly, but we may start to just shift into a whole new paradigm.
Well, you know, I love your question. I think the car will always be an option, you know, here in Houston, we're so spread out, and in Texas, we really...
So, your job at AAA is secure?
Yeah. Well, you know, a car will always be an option, you know, we, I think Houstonians, Texans, we, we value our freedom, like the councilmember was saying. But something interesting that we've seen during that recession period from '08 through the early 2010s, people are keeping ownership of one particular vehicle longer than they have in years past, rather than turning that car over after about five years of ownership. People are keeping their car for 10-plus years, and that's something that we haven't seen since before the recession, that really created that need. And with fluctuating gas prices and the cost of owning and operating a car, that's definitely going to play into the future of the automobile as an option for lots of people. So, just a little tidbit to add to the conversation, but, you know, people are maintaining cars longer, and as the fleet on our American highways age, that also impacts the environment, it impacts the way people are breaking down, other, other safety components, so it's definitely something to consider.
And I think the other thing too, and, there you go. I'd lead with this statement, for me personally, speaking of culture. I mean, I like beer. I like beer a lot, but beer and driving my own car do not mix well. And I think it goes to the culture of, people have always in the past associated with the car with freedom, or the car with choice. I can leave now when I want, I can leave when I, I can come and go as I please because I have my car. But, but what's really exciting, and Houston's going to be able to capitalize on this in a way that other cities can't quite the same, which is, when you give people choices, and we've said this earlier on the panel, now I have the choice, look, I want to drink beer and I want to do it downtown, I can actually ride in with a friend, or I can ride in on the rail, I can ride in a bus, and then once I'm downtown, I have lots of choices after I've been drinking beer about how to get around, and then I can get home safely as we're improving the taxi industry, as we're welcoming in Uber and Lyft and the other TNCs. That choice is going to bring a whole new culture, and I'm very optimistic that it's going to happen faster than we think. Think about how many of you, your grandmother's on Facebook, okay? That same trend is going to continue in mobility, where your grandmother's also going to be like, yeah, I'll join you, even though I haven't driven a car in years because I can't, I'm going to hop in a Lyft, or hop in an Uber, or a taxi, and I'll see you in no time.
Sure, and options are definitely important. I just want to point out that those options are also automobiles. So, you know, while we're limiting cars on the road, you know, the automobile will probably always be an option.
And I think people increase mobility hugely. Without even decreasing driving that much, it would make a lot of difference in Houston to have 20% fewer cars, or even just to keep the number steady. James, I wanted to ask you, is it, my sense is that your generation, people in their twenties, are much less enthusiastic about driving than my generation. Do you feel that? My kids, they don't want to get their driver's license.
That is, that is a trend that, you know, there's been a lot of research into, and the data is showing. I failed to mention earlier that I do drive. I drove a truck a couple of weekends ago to go pick up some home improvement materials. I have a Zipcar membership that allows me to do that. But I think we're coming to realize that, you know, while being able to drive offers a certain freedom, being forced to drive everywhere is not, is not freedom. And as we, as we think about our transportation policy going forward, a lot of the models and, you know, the sort of traffic demand metrics we use assume that going forward, people are going to behave like they have in the recent past. And, you know, the, the things that have been mentioned so far, age of getting driver's license, propensity to own a car, all of these things seem to be shifting in this generation from generations previously. And so, we have to examine whether those assumptions are valid, or if we should, you know, prepare for perhaps a future where not everyone is going to want to drive everywhere.
And that's something that AAA's noticed as well, where we're looking at, we're studying it. Teenagers, we are seeing an increase in the population of choosing to delay getting their license at that 15, 16-year-old milestone, they're delaying it a couple of years. So, perhaps the culture, the thought is changing a little bit about just the car at large and in general, but, you know, more data will become available about that, but that is something that we have seen, is younger teenagers are choosing to delay getting that license.
And as Sarah mentioned earlier, the aging population, I mean, that's a, that's a big deal. Already a full 40% of people in our city don't drive, they're too young, too old, aren't able, or, or don't have the means. And, you know, the question is, do we want to design a city where those people are less than full citizens, or do we want one where they can fully participate and contribute to, to the city?
Great. Do you have more questions?
Hi. I had a question about enforcing safety. An issue I have as a biker, as a pedestrian, and as a driver is that it's frickin' terrifying, terrifying to drive in Houston. Even when I'm surrounded by two tons of metal, I still feel like I'm not safe, like I have to go faster to keep up with this traffic, and then we all hit traffic because people are traveling in the left lane. And one of the things I've found is that Houston and Texas has some of the fewest traffic laws of any city and state in the nation. And even the laws that we do have are not really enforced. How many of us see people going 80, 90 miles an hour to work right before slamming on the brakes because somebody got into an accident going that fast?
I hope that wasn't me.
Well, if it was...
I'm sorry.
Would you have preferred to crash or be pulled over by a cop first? And if you were pulled over by a cop first, which I don't actually see happening that often, except at the end of the month, I mean, do you have to do a reeducation program? Do you have to do ed- drive, or aggressive driving? I was never forced to when I got my ticket in Houston, and I'm glad about that because I couldn't afford it at the time, but just these sorts of ideas of enforcement don't even seem to be going through. I see people hitting bikers and driving away, and I see people getting into accidents and driving away. I've called the police for a hit and run with my ex-boyfriend, and they just waited around, we didn't hear from anybody for hours, we waited in our car at a gas station for hours, and when they came and we said this guy was clearly drunk, they said, yeah, that'll happen, took our information and walked off. I didn't really feel protected, I didn't feel served, I didn't feel like these safety laws that exist, which are already few and far between, were even being enforced. So who, who out of the people up there, who out of anyone here in this room has the power to say, we need to enforce our laws and pass more laws to keep us safe, because it's terrifying from every perspective of transportation?
Councilmember Sisneros, have you been...
Yes.
You're on the hot seat. Now, have you been hearing a lot about this at council?
You know, I think there's a lot of enforcement issues, I mean, it cuts across a lot of issues, not just traffic enforcement, but I mean, but I'm, as I'm out in the community, there are a lot of people saying, why are there so many burglaries? Why, why, why is there so much this, why is there so much that, why is it, why does it feel unsafe? But, and a lot of things seem to go back to, why isn't it enforced? You know, there are actually laws, you know, and why aren't they enforced? And that's a very good question. You know, our mayor is looking at all those things right now, so we'll wait on him to answer.
So, I should write my letters to the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I want to mention, you know, as, as around driving and, you know, I mentioned the type of driving environment that you might find yourself in, depending on where you are driving, in Houston, it might be a jurisdiction of the Metro Police, HPD, Department of Public Safety, Harris County. So that's always important to take into consideration where you are when you're calling for a first responder for assistance, because calling the appropriate branch of law enforcement's going to help facilitate the, the reporting process. If you're not reporting it to the appropriate arm of law enforcement, it will... If you're not reporting it to the appropriate arm of law enforcement, it, it will, um, delay. And I'm not saying that that's what may have occurred in your situation, but just for the crowd in general, make sure you know where you are so that you're contacting the appropriate branch of law enforcement to come to your aid.
Is there a map of the, the boat street somewhere?
Uh, you know, uh, City of Houston's got a lot of information on their HPD website. Tech dot has a lot of good safety information. Harris County has the Motorist Assistance Program. There's, there's lots of resources out there, and I'd be happy to share some websites with you.
Okay, but if we've just seen a biker or a pedestrian hit, we can call 911.
Yeah, absolutely. Call 911. You know, absolutely. Okay.
Hi. Um, most of the kind of estimates are right now that Uber and Lyft will have kind of automated vehicles within about five years, and it'll be less than fifty cents a mile to go anywhere you want, and potentially a lot less if you do the Uber Pool type of approach, where it's multiple people linked together into one trip. So, but I haven't heard much talk about that, like how that affects city planning, how that affects transit planning, how, I mean, what is that going to do to normal transit when people can dial that up so quickly? What, how should Houston be rethinking of the 2020s essentially for all of our long-term infrastructure and city planning? And I'd just like to hear from the panel on, on their thoughts on, on automated, automated taxis in the 2020s, and what we should do to plan for that.
Yeah, the whole, the whole thing about autonomous vehicles, it sounds kind of scary, right? Them vehicles that are just driving themselves around. But, but, um, but they say, the, the, the traffic experts say it's a lot closer than we think, and that when it gets here, it's going to save us a lot of money. It, you know, it, um, but even, even now, you know, the, the, the metro rail has to have an, an engineer on it. They don't actually need someone to be driving it, but, but the law says that they ha, the way we, the regulations are, we have to have someone on the, on the train. But I think it, it's, it's that kind of, um, the reluctance to, to trust the technology. What, you know, what if someone goes, something goes wrong? I, I think, you know, um, having faith that, that something will not go wrong is, is probably one of the biggest hurdles with that. But, but I think that, that, that in terms of what's technologically available, we're a lot closer to that than, than people generally realize.
Yeah. James, could you talk a little about that?
Yeah, sure. First, I'd note that we also weren't prepared for flying cars by the year 2000, um, but, uh, that ended up being an okay bet. Um, I think, you know, there's, the freeway is a controlled environment, is, is one situation. City streets and the complexities involved are different, and I'm not sure it's coming quite as quickly as some, some people might say. But when it does, uh, at the end of the day, all it's really doing is making transportation cheaper, uh, in terms of time and in terms of money. And we know from experience, when we've made it cheaper in terms of time, in terms of money, more is used. And so it won't change the fundamental laws of, of geometry. There still will only be so much space on, on our streets, so much space in our city. And, uh, and using that efficiently will, will still be very important. I mean, if the, you know, if the potential for, for driverless cars in, in the more car-oriented types of development patterns, uh, is significant, imagine the potential of driverless buses in, in the denser portions. Um, so, I mean, I think it's definitely something to keep in mind, but we also have to, uh, remember that it, it won't change, you know, the fundamental ways that, uh, that geometry and math work, or people's preferences in terms of where they want to be, you know, around other people, and, and doing things that aren't-
But James, could it radically change parking lots? If I, if my car can drop me off and then go park itself somewhere far away and cheap?
Well, for-
Or go pick up someone else?
Absolutely.
Could we get by with a lot fewer parking spaces?
Absolutely, but we could get a lot, we could get by with a lot fewer parking spaces even before that. I mean, I think-
I don't have to wait.
Rethinking parking is one of the easiest things we can do to make the city more financially resilient, to, you know, increase the tax base, uh, solve some of the, the fiscal problems we're having, and, you know, reducing tax burdens. There's, there's a lot of good reasons to, you know, to address parking, uh, to address our, you know, some of the other regulations that are so, uh, driving-oriented, uh, with or without driverless vehicles, but I think that's a good point.
I want to push back on your question.
Really?
You notice, Lisa, you said, "So if my autonomous vehicle drops me off and then I go..." It's not going to be your autonomous vehicle.
Oh, well, like-
You're going to be renting it. You're going to be sharing it. It goes back to the point earlier. If you think that anybody in this room can afford an airplane, well, maybe somebody in here can, you don't. You share that airplane. But guess what? Nobody's flying that airplane. There are two pilots who sit up in the front to make us all feel better, but almost, honestly, honestly, almost the entire flight is automated now. So I see the optimistic side of autonomous vehicles. Because you know the most dangerous thing in a car right now?
Person.
The person. The human. I'm not pointing. But the point is, the point is, we kill thirty-four thousand Americans every year with our automobiles. I cannot wait for autonomous vehicles. So what you can do today is, as you're reading these articles, don't see it as a threat. See it as an amazing opportunity for how we're going to make our community safer, more efficient. And demand will go up. Demand will definitely go up for mobility, but isn't that a good thing? When our senior citizens today who cannot drive, when our, when our blind, when those who are handicapped, can return to society in a way they haven't ever in the history of our, uh, nation in terms of how we've spread out. So I'm an optimist. I'm an optimist.
I think one of the things that's going to happen too is that, that the way they work, from what I understand, and, and you probably know a lot more about this than I do, but, but there will be dedicated lanes for, for autonomous vehicles. Is that, is that what you understand?
It's a possi, it's a possibility.
Anybody in here in the room have cruise control on their car?
Yeah.
Autonomous vehicles are already semi-autonomous, and they're already here. They're just going to get better and better and better.
Yeah. At the same time, Joseph, the whole, uh, the whole sharing thing, the, the times I wish that I had a car with me aren't when, you know, I wish I could get on my phone and someone would take me from here to there, because I have that already. Uh, it's, it's called a taxi or Uber. It's when I have a, you know, a bag of, of clothes, but I want to go to the grocery store as well on my way home. So I'm, I'm not totally certain about that. Um, the, the other thing is a lot of the benefits that, and, you know, in terms of, of road capacity, things like that, that are, that are touted with autonomous vehicles, aren't going to be realized until all of the ro, the vehicles on the road are, are driverless. And whether that's, you know, realistic or possible is a big question. If, you know, there's another, uh, sort of personal piece of, uh, an implement, uh, of life that's in the news a lot lately, that, you know, was once very useful, but now is, you know, mostly just used for fun or for sport, uh, and is highly dangerous if used, uh, incorrectly or recklessly. Uh, you know, the statistics will tell you that, you know, no rational person should want to bring one into their home, but people fiercely will defend their, their right to do that, and-
And citizens love those.
Exactly. And so, and so, and so whether the car with the driver is something that will ever be eliminated from the streets, I think, is, is not certain.
More questions. Lots of questions. Oh, okay.
Okay. If our cities cannot even provide Flint, Michigan water, and our, as I walk down the street to the rail line, I pass ditches instead of sidewalks, part of the question. How are we going to get to the complete streets that gave line or, or the active transportation people once a half?
Well, allow me to be cliche again, and you must make your voice heard. You have to complain. If you have streets that do not have sidewalks, complain and be loud and get everybody in your neighborhood mad. If you see kids waiting for the bus in the grass or the gravel on the side of the road, be mad and be loud. And I will tell you that mobilityhouston.com is a good place for it. But honestly, it won't change if you don't raise your voice, and you can't raise your voice unless you're talking together.
And I will also mention, you know, a great way to have a conversation about that and to bring up, um, the, to, to the city's attention that there is that need, because sometimes they just simply may not know that there was a need for a crosswalk, a walker station, or, or a curb and gutter type situation where you are. 311 is always a great way to call in, or sending an email to your district or at-large council member so they can at least get it on their radar. There are, um, processes in place in the city where you can, where you can initiate these requests. And the more requests that you initiate, the more people that you talk to in your community that are also calling and reporting, that's giving it weight in the queue. So it's important to be part of the conversation.
I'd like to underscore the importance of 311. I know, you know, people say, "Oh, it doesn't work. I don't use that." Call it. Call it. It really does matter. They, it does matter.
The other part of the question is, AAA, you've been giving me statistics throughout the night. AAA has access by money to a lot of data that the individual citizen doesn't have access to, that is actually our, our data we've already paid for. And so that might be one part of the problem, is, is we have C-click-
We have C-click Fix for 311. We, these, uh, and, and we just, the data is, just needs to be available more. And C-click Fix needs to be more responsive, and 311 needs to be more responsive. You turn in and it says closed. You don't know what has been done. And, and so it just, and even our, we have a problem with being able to email or Twitter each other and communicate, because there is a problem with the accountability and the problems that that will incur down the road. And we just, we have to work out all of those. How are we going to work out all of those?
Sure, the, the, a lot of the information I have, uh, spoken about tonight is on the AAA Foundation for Traffic Safety website. All of the information is available. It's searchable. Um, and, and it's definitely something that, you know, public entities can, can use as a resource. But, you know, I would just go back to what the council member said. Um, you know, not only you calling in and encouraging your community, but, you know, if you don't have a civic organi, organization in place, it's a great way to gather people together to initiate a civic organization. If there's one in your area that does not exist, that brings, um, power to that voice. And it helps, uh, gi, give those issues some rise in the queue. And, and regarding any work that has been done, whether it's as completed or closed, uh, you know, I would, I would say that, that again is what your, um, district or at-large council member is there for, to help you walk through the steps that that city department took. Um, when they took the call to when they closed it. You can definitely go through and, and get someone to walk you through what steps that department had taken so that you, as a citizen who called and initiated that, will know.
Exactly. I mean, uh, city council offices can help with that, and-
I would like to just recognize, my colleague, um, uh, council member Amanda Edwards is in the back, and, um-
Oh.
So say hello, hello, Amanda.
Hi. Another council member we can talk to.
Yes, and that's, and that's what we do. We help people navigate the system. Call 311, but sometimes, you know, they'll, 311 will say, "A problem got fixed," and you'll know that it didn't get fixed. Call, call our office. We'll help you work through that.
Okay, thank you. More questions? Uh, well, you in the blue. Are we closing out?
We talked a lot, we talked about-
Sorry.
-technology and the advancement of IP.
Okay.
No.
Okay, sorry, sorry. The advancement of technology in transportation, but what about the technology in transport, like inside your vehicles? I see people, I mean, I was driving on 610 the other day, and I'm looking around. Every single person was on their phone. And that, I mean, as, as somebody who, I'm too scared to ride my bike, and I'm, my tires have been flat for a long time, but, um, that is petrifying. I mean, 610 is awful as it is, but then you add every person on their phone. I mean, I wish we could go back to the horse and buggy thing. Not really, because of what my business is, but-
I've stood at, I've stood at bus stops and watched, you know, cars at the light, or, or cars going by, and it seemed to be one person talking on the phone, one person holding their phone, and then one person actually driving.
And I'll say, I'm, I'm guilty. I have like three phones. And I'll be texting on one, emailing on the other, and on my Bluetooth. Not really. But, like, is there's anything, I don't know if there's any talk, not that I want it to happen, but I, I want it to happen. At, on a city level, and a lot of other cities have a no texting, no phone policy. Some little school districts do, but, I mean, that would help with a lot of-
I mean, I think the council member will confirm. The only way she can know what's important to her constituents is if they tell her. And so, you know, that's, that's where it has to start, I think.
So, so, you know, you bring up a great, uh, a, a safety issue. It's something that's prevalent across the United States. And the Safety Culture Index, I just want to share this statistic with you because texting and emailing while driving is definitely a, a big issue. Eighty-four percent say it's completely unacceptable to text and drive. Yet, in a recent survey, thirty-six percent of drivers admit to texting while driving within the past thirty days. So, um, you know, when you are texting and driving, it is as if you're driving with your eyes closed. Your, your motor skills are engaged somewhere else. Your cognitive reasoning is engaged somewhere else. And, you know, highway driving that you mentioned earlier, um, very, very dangerous to, to do that while you're driving. And I think we all, all know that. Um, but it's, it's, it's getting the information and making the connection to actually changing the behavior.
I don't know that we can change that behavior at this point, but as technology advances in vehicles, I mean, my car essentially makes a dinner for me now. Like, doesn't, it's not, you cannot do it. I mean, my car has a setting, if I have a child, with a certain key. You can't, nothing will happen if you're on your phone.
Well-
You turn on your camera, it shuts off.
And again, you know, I, I, you know, tri, recent AAA studies, it's on AAA Foundation, uh, AAA Traffic Safety Foundation dot com. Um, we've recently done a study about how those, those in-car systems can also affect your cognitive reasoning. It would be a great read for you to take a look at. Um, but, uh, different, uh, vehicle manufacturers have slightly different systems, and they impede, uh, cognitive reasoning in slightly different ways. So it's definitely something you want to research and take into consideration when you're looking to purchase a vehicle. And it's something that you also want to be aware of. If, like you said, you already own that type of vehicle, um, is there something that you don't need to do with that system while you're driving so that you're completely focused on the act of driving?
More questions. Could we, last question, okay? If we could wind it up. One more.
Well, I know we're all here this evening to think about the future of transportation here in Houston. And I'd really love to hear sort of a snapshot vision from each of our panelists as to how they believe many of these questions, the technology, the, the urban landscape, the, the streetscape. How ca, how do you each believe that it can be improved so that it's going to better the lives of Houstonians?
James?
Okay, I mean, I think there are a lot of exciting things going on, and that the improvement, um, you know, I'd, I'd have to step back for a minute and try and think out that many years, because in, you know, my day-to-day work, I know that it's going to be an evolution. It's going to be one step at a time. The system has to make sense every step of the way. And so with, with some of the efforts going on, I mean, you know, all of a sudden in August, we got a local bus system that is relevant to the city again, that is likely to be useful for a lot more people. To Metro's credit, they, they recognized that their, their local bus system wasn't getting it done, and, uh, and went back to the drawing board. And now we have something that already, you know, we're seeing more and more people take advantage of. Um, there's a lot of energy around bicycling right now. Bike Houston's doing a great job of, of getting those voices heard, that we want our streets to be safe for everyone. Um, and, you know, B-cycle is, is getting more people out there to, to enjoy them. The Bayou Greenways have extended, you know, safe walking and biking trails into, into many different neighborhoods, and now people are clamoring for a way to get from their house or from their job uh, to those, to those great transportation and recreation resources. So, I mean, I think, uh, you know, one step at a time will, will move towards a city that, uh, you know, I think all of us have in our head what would be a, a more livable, um, more enjoyable city to be in. It probably doesn't involve spending large times of, large amounts of time sitting in traffic, or, you know, pollution, or large parking lots. And I think step by step, we'll start moving towards that.
I'll tell you what my snapshot looks like in all the freeways. Number one is, this is a Friday night, and there are a hundred people in this room talking about how to change Houston's mobility. That's the League of Women Voters making it happen in all the people here. That's the first thing that gives me great optimism for Houston. Secondly, you have two sitting city council members on a Friday night and the mayor's transportation director here to hear what's going on. That's fabulous. Your mayor just yesterday said that if we don't change the paradigm of people driving by themselves, we'll never fix this problem. Folks, mayors in most cities don't talk like that. That's awesome. And then lastly, you already built the infrastructure of almost more highway miles than almost any city of your six-hundred-plus square miles. You're going to very easily, with twelve lanes wide, be able to start dedicating lanes here soon, when you have the will to do it, to dedicate to more HOV and to dedicate a bus lane to the point where there might be three lanes for people driving by themselves, and like, the great majority are going to be moving through densification, hundreds, if not thousands, more people per minute, per mile. And here's the best part. They won't be driving faster. They'll actually be going a little bit slower, but everybody gets there quicker because there's not that stop and go, stop and go, stop and go that you have today. So I think the future for Houston is very bright, after everything I've seen here today.
And I want to piggyback on that. You know, City of Houston does an exceptional job of including stakeholders. And, and I think my big picture, um, finish here would be, um, needing options and being inclusive. And I think the city does that great at the council level. Council members work very hard to engage their communities. And I think the mayor's doing a great job by, um, inviting, uh, special interest groups that represent different kinds of transportation to, to the table so that they- different kinds of transportation to the table, so that they can discuss their particular mode of transportation and how it's going to fit in the overall plan. So options and being inclusive and having more voices at the table, which again, in the platform tonight is...
MobilityHouston.com.
Right. So, exactly. MobilityHouston.com, so that you too can lend your voice to the conversation. I think the city does a great job at that.
The only thing I would add to that is that you continue to support people who, to represent you who think the same way. Otherwise, I agree with everyone up here on this panel.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. And once again, that's MobilityHouston.com.